Marco does.
And every country. I don't know how to have that. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Is that it? Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good. Testing. Yep. I have that fixed it. I need to make sure they've started recording. Okay. Yeah. That is good.
All right, and so you take all those and then, you know, one of the keys to good plan is to develop some guiding principles, some rules for planning. You know, when we went in here, the, the plan was develop a 10 year plan. Make the first five years strategic and then make that six to 10 year very visionary, you know, what, what you can do after that. It should keep your facility condition index bad or below 15%. That's currently where you are. And so as you go out in time, you know, we've always, we've talked often about how, you know, the needs go up quicker than the funding. And that gap just keeps getting bigger and bigger in time. And the strategic investments will actually prove to be better and less expensive in the long run. And so what looks like a big number that comes in, remember it's an, it's an asset investment. And so what you're trying to do is to maintain that over time. Because 15% looks a whole lot bigger in 2030 than it does today. And so we have to pay attention to that. To, you know, this is, this one seems kind of simple, but it's do no harm. And as simple as that sounds, you want to make sure that you're protecting the integrity of programs, protecting the integrity of enrollment. You know, making sure that everybody's paid attention to that, you know, when you make decisions that transportation isn't harmed from either a student service perspective or a cost perspective, that's a big number for you guys. And so we want to make sure that we're staying within those parameters to make sure those programs are being served. And then it should be proactive to enrollment demographic changes. And again, we talked a little bit about that is that you should have a little bit of cushion in there for capacity in time. That if that, if that changes, if that model changes with student enrollment, you should be prepared for that. But you shouldn't be so much where you have so much capacity that you're maintaining space that you don't need. And so it's always going to be a fine balance for districts and especially districts of your size and now. And that's, that's kind of weird to say, but those, the two and three high school towns in this country really do struggle with a asking number. Because they sometimes they feel too full. And then five years later, it just changes on you. And so you're always, you're always going to kind of be in that balance. I live in the same town. I've got three high schools in our town and they're dealing with the same things. And enrollment shifts, neighborhoods don't gentrify as quick as other neighborhoods. That happens, but you want to maintain a portfolio that can manage that at a time and have some fluctuation for that. So, um, so after the, after the guiding principles then, they could, now we'll just move into recommendations. And I think first of all, let's kind of define what we're trying to look at. You know, first of all, the terms that you're going to see new construction or replacement, okay? New construction replacement can mean that we're going to replace a facility. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be on the same site, but it can be on the same site. Capital renewal, this is requiring moderate to major renovation facility. When we talk about capital renewal, typically we're talking about both physical and educational appropriateness of the school. So it might be, the best way I can explain it is that in a capital renewal, you're probably moving walls along with physical improvements to improve the space of the school. Those move into those more capital projects. And when you look at, um, one of the things we wanted to point out is the funding source you have available for that. So like in a cap and obviously new construction that has to typically be done in capital bonds. You know, when you're talking about elementary schools that are going to cost you 20, 30 or 40 million in time or high schools that are going to cost you 70, 80, 90, 100 million in time, those are going to be big capital programs. Capital renewal can also be done in capital bonds and oftentimes are depending on scale and size, investment and time of investment. So a roof is a good long-term investment because it's got a 25-year life. So, and carpet may not always be the long, the capital bond program. But when you get into capital renewal, some of those can be put into your supplemental plant facilities levy. That gives you some more flexibility. It's a little easier as far as a funding source and time for you to have that. Minor renovations, probably less intrusive, um, things that are going to happen in buildings can require some minor programmatic things, but typically those programmatic things might be more like equipment changes and minor renovations. General maintenance are things that you're always going to do, that you just keep maintaining, like Kelly and Cody kind of look at now. And then the reuse and discontinue, and I actually, I have in mind, but I should have put this in here. Reuse would be any definition of a building that we might discontinue in its current capacity and change to a different use. It could go to administration, it could go to a different program, it could hold an alternative program, maybe go to specialized pre-K. All kinds of different things that we want to explore. Discontinuing schools is part of this that you're going to see. And then raising buildings means that if there is a building that we see that doesn't have a long-term future or is better to demolish than keep, it might be cheaper to demolish it than keep the building, we also have that in there. So let's look at some of these. So in our recommendations, new construction replacements, Napa High School, Napa High School. We're not, um, again, we'll get into some details later, but I can go on some of these. Napa High School is a replacement. We have not made the decision in this facility's plan whether it stays on the same site or moves to a site. We think it's something that the board probably has to kind of explore a little deeper. And we're just talking about it and might have to go back out and talk to your community a little bit. Let it marinate with the community about the benefits and challenges of staying where it currently is versus moving into a new site. And again, I think that's a good healthy discussion to have because I think there are benefits and challenges to both. Centennial Elementary, a replacement building, a new career and technical center. This also might be driven by where you put Napa High School in time. The other thing would be a central administration. We actually don't think this is part of something you will have to look at immediately. But it is something that you may be able to explore more private, you know, private partnerships with, you know, public private partnerships with to help in a funding like that. But obviously a good central administration that has good training space, has the ability for the district function from administrative standpoint is good. We also know that, you know, public perception of putting a central administration site sometimes isn't the best perception out there. But I think people understand the business is supposed to and how important that is. And oftentimes these do contain things like professional training centers that, that teachers come to gather that the district could use. And so I think those are the new construction replacement on here. The capital improvements are obvious at Columbia High School in Skyview, and I'll go into some detail when we get into the other sheet here. But also the East Valley, South and West, and there's going to be a reason for all those in time. But, you know, what's interesting about this is that as we went through the options on this, you know, because capital improvements end up, end up being pretty big numbers and they happen to be at your biggest schools too. But they're just aging to be that way. Now, the other thing we need to pay attention to is that the kind of improvements we make at those buildings, don't put the district in a predicament of 25 years again, where all your big projects come up in year 25 again. And so how do you pace that in time? So what I, what I kind of call the EKG of school funding is that you get all these projects and then for 10 years you do nothing. And then you get all these projects again in year 15. And then all of a sudden, the board that gets on board in 25 years is dealing with a massive thing because you replaced everything in one year. And so we want to try to avoid that and get that more to, well, worst, worst case scenario is flatline, but more to an even line going across in time. And I think that's just been a good steward for future boards, for future communities out here to not put the burden out there 25 years or 30 or 40 years down the road for those, for the next group. And I don't think that happens very often. I think that when we did Boise 06, this was a big concern was that this idea that, you know, we get all the high schools in one plan. All of a sudden in 30 years, all our high school is going to be on one plan again. And so we're trying to pace those out a little bit more to get those. Minor renovations to Central Iowa and Sherman, and there's some strategic reasons for those minor renovations also. Not that other elementary schools can't use some, uh, but there's some strategic reasons I'll get into in a minute. And we'll go down just a little bit more on this sheet for the next one. So general maintenance, these are things again, that you're just going to do annually. These are in your annual budget for maintenance in these schools. And again, I do believe that every school should be put into a facilities master plan to be identified. And district-wide projects, these are things that, you know, kind of get done that, you know, people may or may not pay attention to unless they're specifically involved, things like safety and security. You know, um, public announcement equipment, security cameras are something that you're always going to be in a continuous upgrade on. You know, athletics, middle school and high school track resurfacing, um, tennis courts at the high school. You know, your stadiums, you know, stadiums and gymnasiums, your bleachers and field upgrades that just need to happen. Those get dated, they need replaced. You know, doing a bulldog bowl renovation, a complete renovation of the stadium, you know, and upgrade that, that's a central piece of Napa. So getting that done, um, looking at weight room, sound system upgrades. And then, you know, site and grounds about landscaping, parking lot sidewalk upgrades. You know, those, those parking lots and sidewalks catch up to you. They're not cheap projects, you know, the, the price of concrete today is, you know, everything's up, the concrete especially. And when you're looking at resurfacing or asphalting, um, to get that on a more, on a, a more set schedule out in years to get those done and keeping those on a schedule is probably a good idea and a cost efficient idea. Landscaping, going to more zero escaping, where it's less maintenance, less water, you know, the ability to keep sites clean and neat without all the costs that go along with that, that, but it takes an investment to get there in the long term of theater. Then looking at reuse or discontinue of raising, you know, raise of the Union High School, again, there's going to be an action to that. And Rehers and Snake River, but Snake River may have a possibility of something else. This is Snake River in the last week or so. There's been some talk about, you know, renovation of another building that probably can't happen. It's just too expensive and costly everywhere. Snake River might be the school to keep there. Reuse of West, Middle and then Central Elementary. And again, I'll get into details of why we would reuse those buildings and for what. So as you get into this, and this gets a little more detailed and granular. But it gets into some of the costs out there that, that are necessary to do this. And again, I think Napa built it a 1500 capacity high school. Now people will say, why 1500, there's already, you're already pushing limits of 1500. But I think that, um, we're going to talk a little bit about feeder pattern realignment in a process like this in time. But I think it's going to help balance out a little bit. And again, I think capacity defined by bricks and mortar is archaic. I think the way students learn today in high school especially, that even a 1500 student school that was built bricks and mortar wise can hold 17 or 1800 with creative scheduling online, you know. There's, you know, 30% of kids don't go to high school eight hours a day anymore. And so, yeah, how do you balance that a little bit? And so I think that that's, I think it's a good number because I think the number is big. I think the building my high school today, um, especially in the West, Western part of the United States is really, really expensive. Centennial Elementary School, again, new construction on existing site, capacity 675, which puts you in line with the other elementary schools for capacity, consistency of program. A current technical center, again, I think this is a 50 to 70,000 square foot, 30 million allocated to it to see what you can do in that 50 to 70,000. Obviously you build career centers to be expanded on to and to be built on to. These buildings don't quite cost as much structurally necessarily, but their equipment costs are bigger. And so if, you know, things that we've talked about, if you, again, I'll use Boise example, if you go to their career center, it's not, if you look at their work areas, it's not a traditional bricks and mortar. It's, you know, they've got some, you know, more steel structure buildings out there that are a little less expensive to build. And then again, um, the district central administration office to be determined. The capital renewal, this gives some specifics on Columbia High School athletic upgrades. New auxiliary gym is specifically on that one. That's an equity thing, um, condition of flooring, cafeteria renovations, Skyview, you can see the numbers big. So what we have in here is their condition assessment number here. That comes from the AMRESCO number and then the investment for other things for the capital improvement. So for instance, the four and a half million and more is allocated to the auxiliary gym. Where the two and a half million goes to more of this condition. Programmatically for Skyview, building new theater, renovation of existing theater to band, um, athletics about or lighting. And then conditions, just deferred maintenance, component replacement, component replacement are those, the, the, those big, other replacement things. And so a big dollar on that 26 million again, but the goal is you're expanding, you're extending the life of that building 30 to 40 years with that. And that's a big deal. That's a, for a $26 million investment to last another 30 or 40 years, pretty good investment on a, on a 60-year high school. East Valley Middle, um, again, more of a conditioning, flooring, restroom upgrades, um, gym bleachers, locker rooms. South roof windows, HVAC, um, and West Middle School again. Capital renewal, the idea here is we're going to close West Middle School and reuse it for alternative education or union or the union program. Again, I think the balance of middle schools and the capacity at those schools, especially with further enrollment is going to allow you the necessary capacity and it cleans up your feeders, create three middle schools and three high schools. And so, um, that also gives you opportunity to use West a lot of different things. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Skyview High School, excuse me, uh, athletics. Does that include, what is, what does that include that for athletics?
So under this one in Skyview, you have in here, part of this athletics is, um, is outdoor lighting. But go back to the, the district wide things, bleacher replacement. In both gym and in the stadium and then turf, we talked about turf. Is part of that and it could be a number of things in there, so.
And I don't want to get into too much detail when you talk about it, but does that include possible athletic building or weight rooms?
Yeah.
Weight room.
You'll see that's actually, yeah, that comes up a little bit later in more details.
So, yeah, and so, and again, part of that district wide scope of like weight rooms and things could be distributed out to where the name.
Yes, that's what we're used to.
Yeah. And I think part of that is like, so for instance, when we went out, like, one of the things you'll want to do is do an equity kind of a prospect because it wouldn't be too hard to do an equity thing on your high school weight rooms or your middle school weight rooms too. Just to see where your net worths are and then invest where we got dollars invested for that. I think that's a good plan for that.
And you, you started that.
Okay, go to the next one. So then in minor renovations, again, for Central Iowa, oh, and Sherman here, deferred maintenance with space upgrades for pre-K. At Central, that's a reuse idea. One of the things we talked about Central was, um, Central's a great location for a school. It's right in the middle of the city, but the population is, student population is declining a lot. And look, it's not, they, you know, we talked pretty open about this is that that would be a prime target for a charter to walk into, obviously. So again, when we talked about protecting enrollment, protecting our facilities, part of that was there is a need for pre-K services in the central part of the city. And so, and the building is conditioned to that. And so, um, and so there's plenty of space for it. And we think it's a good investment and it's a solid bill. It's a really solid bill. And then I've always made the joke, if you don't want the gym, I'll cut it off and you take it back to Ohio with me because I love your gym. I'm an old Indiana boy. So, and the, and again, the general maintenance, those dollars will be in your budget out there. And so again, we've given, we've allocated minor renovations, a million dollar program fee. And again, that's more site-specific investment. So going into Central, what are pre-K needs, here's a million dollars to cover those needs. And then obviously the condition to get rid of all that defer to keep you at that 15% below. Okay. Okay, so then part of our safety and security of public announcement equipment and security cameras. Then looking at athletics, high schools, resurfacing tracks, Columbia, we got replaced tennis court stadiums for, you know, bleacher replacement, steel upgrade, bulldog, gymnasiums, all these things are included in those dollars. And you see again, we've allocated in here, um, you know, about $6 million for upgrades, you know, bulldog bowl renovations. You know, it could be, you know, again, go into the assessment to see what level that you want that build, that you want it to be. Maybe it's 2 million, maybe it's 4 million, maybe it's a million and a half. Again, do what you need to do in stadium to get to the stadium you want for the next 25 years. That's the goal there and there's allocated dollars for that. And that's going to take some architectural and engineering assessment on that to be site specific. Again, we've talked about landscape and parking lot sidewalks, the reuse on here, again, um, West Middle School closes, middle school reuses union alternative. We're going to move, we're going to raise the union school, um, snake and Greenhurst again. You know, look at the future and I think in these, you've got some more discussion to have just based on some recent conversations you had. So this has some fluidity to it, you know, based on going out and seeing what the cost of some of these things are more specifically when you get there. So these are pretty good investments again, but even when you raise a building, it costs money to raise a building. And so, um, but again, sometimes that investment of raising the building creates, it opens up partnerships with city, Partrac. It could do, um, it could be a green space, it could be some other use for you guys in the future. It just leaves a lot of possibilities instead of blank. And that's what we don't want to do in any community that's out there. Okay, and look at cost estimates by action type. Again, you got different funding resources for all these. But in new construction replacement, about 170, 173 million dollars, I'm sorry, three and a half million dollars. Capital renewal, just over 41 million, um, minor renovations, just under 13. District-wide improvements, which almost every school gets touched on that one, about 20, about 23 and a half million. Almost every school gets touched on that one, about twenty, about twenty three and a half million. And then about just north of a million dollars reuse or raise. And so again, one of the things that we didn't want to do, we didn't want to necessarily just throw a total up there. Because we want you to have some fluidity within some decision making about the action that you want to do in the future. And, you know, where you, and actually then where you want to fund it from in the future and how you'll fund it. So what it does though, it, um, so, so the result to make sure that, you know, you kind of, you know, where you want to go. Is that with these decisions being made, you can see that you went from an existing square footage, nine hundred and twenty thousand square foot at the elementary to eight hundred and four. That's a significant square footage savings at times. Now, again, you can estimate anywhere from five to seven dollars a square foot to operate a building. And when you do that over thirty years, do the math. And so, but it also just gets your utilization to eighty five percent, which you a comfortable range of about fifteen percent for any fluctuations you might have in time. At the middle school, even with, you know, even with, um, you know, the capacity coming off of West. And keeping again, the six eight at New Horizon, you can still see that middle school utilization, the projected enrollment is still under ninety percent. And so you still have some space in there, there, um, and so it depends on the timing of it, could be a little tight to start. But in time will be just fine. And then again, your high schools, again, when we talk about the numbers out there, it's seventy six percent. That's a pretty good number, um, you know, typically you'd like to see it eighty, eighty or five percent. But again, it's how you use your buildings and how it'll be used in the future, but that gets you a comfortable room for growth also. And you can see that even though we stayed the same square footage as middle school. We did increase about twenty thousand, a little over twenty thousand at the high school with, with the replacement. But again, the offset of the elementary toll means that you're down in square footage also. And you've got a more efficient district as far as square footage goes. And we have a jeopardized program, we've actually enhanced programs by realigning programs. And so in any master plan, there also has to be implementation recommendations, things that are necessary to get a plan done. Yeah, the first one, we're not going to spend a lot of time on because it doesn't warrant a lot of discussion yet is that. Eventually with some of these decisions, a boundary process will have to be looked at, feeder patterns, how boundaries are looked in this future. That will have to be explored, any facilities planned and any districts should go through that process anyway, the self valuation. Hiring a capital program management consultant, um, is probably a good idea. Now, this isn't meant to, this isn't meant to, um, sound poor because it's, it doesn't, it shouldn't. Is that you don't have the capacity or talent internally to run a hundred and fifty, two hundred million dollar program because you don't do it all the time. And to hire FTEs to come in that you're going to pay, train, house, benefit, ensure. Then retire at some point in a five or ten years, probably not a good investment. So in the capital program, the cost that you see do include costs off costs like that. So A and E firms, PM firms, um, those kind of planning, you know, planning firms, those kind of things. But part of the reason in the, in the PM services is that there has to be construction oversight. And again, your facilities guys are already working on the, so they've got their day to day jobs to do. You need project controls, managing what goes in, what goes out, looking at contracts, auditing contracts that come in from architects and engineers and, and. And construction companies, those are, you need to audit this, those, and then, because you're going to be audit them someday. And the board is going to audit them. You're going to want to see those numbers all the time. Yeah.
Did you say that those costs were already figured into the numbers that we saw?
Yeah, those are in the soft costs are in those numbers. We want to make sure the soft costs are in those numbers. And again, some design management, energy management, again, making sure that when you have standards to build to, that the design professionals are following those design standards. That you don't, you're not interested in building architectural award winning on the front of a magazine. You want good, practical, long lasting schools that fit your budget. And so in the PM service, I can do that, creating site specific education. So you have it, when we did the educational act, so we developed a baseline of educational standards for your buildings. But even in the elementary schools at the six seventy five, you have a prototype, which is a functional prototype, but you may want to adapt that prototype a little bit. Because you're now you're fifteen years later after that. So making sure that that's in there, defining to your standards and then of course engage a financial advisor, which you already have. But the financial advisor will become more and more critical as you decide different funding pathways for different types of programs you want to run. And so I think that you're going to be talking to your financial advisor again in the next, you know, four weeks, six weeks to go over some of this too. So I think those are good implementation strategies for you as you implement this. And then, um, as you, then you start to look at the timeline, again, within a five year program. Again, you see that, how you have to stagger this is to make sure that. And one of the things that you want to be sure of is that you're not displacing the educational process as much as possible. And so part of, again, your discussions in the next few months, talking about Napa High will be this idea that if you leave on site, where do kids go? Like swing space, we call it swing space. You know, what does it happen? Can you use West? Well, if you use West, then you probably got to get West done way up front. And maybe have some portable solutions for a little while, while that gets done. Or if you move to a new site, you're not worried about that. And but if that's the case, then that's where the current technical high school and maybe the district admin comes into play later down the road. Um, and again, you can see that we've staggered renovations through different time periods, um, including district level needs. You see that they're mostly summer type projects, um, you know, things like, you know, P A equipment, security cameras, you're going to do all the way through the year. We just kind of made it look so it's like in your maintenance program, but those are typically done continuously anyway. But you can see what we've also tried to do is we also tried to balance some funding in here too. Is that when you're, when you're looking at how you're going to fund a program like this, is to, like, if we don't have it all up here, that's okay, we can get some more back here. And so you can stagger that out too. But it all fits within a, an implementation strategy of five years that can work. And again, in a, if you go from anywhere from a hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred, two hundred fifty, whatever the number is, a five year period is manageable then. Is that, that's a twenty five to forty, forty million, forty million dollar investment a year that is actually very manageable. When you're looking at labor availability, labor rates, um, making sure you have the materials, all those kind of things. I think it staggers it out to make sure that protects you a little bit in that. And again, nobody knows what the next five years looks like because you can't. But we also do know that even when economic times go down a little bit, that good capital programs can maintain cities over time. Good, um, you know, so I think one of the things to even look at is, you know, maybe doing an economic impact analysis of what a hundred million dollar program looks like. Or a two hundred million dollar program looks like because, you know, that's swinging hammers and that's, that's paying the bills for people. And so I think those are things that remember that e- even though it's a spend, it's an investment. And the return on the investment oftentimes is very good. And it gives you as a board some flexibility about how you want to move forward. And that's probably most critical for you all as to not pin you guys into a corner saying, we have to do just this at this time. And it gives you, again, it possibly gives you some extra ramps in time too. So that's how the schedule is kind of built. There's some fluidity here. Um, but it fits, and it fits well. And so I think that was, that's it, that's a, that's a kind of a culmination of. Four or five years of really thoughtful stuff, there's obviously the state of the schools has much more deep background data for you, um, to go look at. That kind of supports all this. So with that, I'll just open any questions or comments or any discussion we want to have.
What was the last facility plan?
We, we actually don't think there has been a comprehensive one done in the district and anybody here's ten years. The one that was, the one that built you, we were just talking about this and that built those two thousand nine schools was really about, but here's a subdivision, build a school, here's a subdivision.
So specifically, Napa was small enough, we really didn't have facilities planned. When it started growing, I'm talking to our former operation director, Arment, current, uh, he was basically said. City would come say X amount of homes here, we'd say school there, X amount of homes here, it's with that until we get for a while.
Which is pretty common practice. I mean, it's, and it worked, your schools are a pretty good sponsor right now, but. Um, I think you've become sophisticated enough and big enough where this is, well, and planning is part of what you do. It's just something we do.
The, uh, you say there's a committee that has gone through this. I mean, has looked at all the different schools and the needs, um. Everybody's on board with this plan or has a very inside?
I think that the, the committee that we have had is really, um, on board with what we're going, there's still some things that's not working out.
Yeah.
There's a lot of decisions that have to be made, um, because if this decision's made, then you have to put it through this, this line. Going back to the example of, you know, behind, where's the eyes at onsite, because if that decision's made, there's a trickle. So there's, there's a lot of, I, I draw it into a choose your own adventure models, once you make the decision, you have to go back and visit. I think that's why we're here now at that juncture, we have enough of the structure and more of the facilities, uh, we have some recommendations. This is the part where we start to choose our path through.
I think what the facility committee has seen is exactly where the current, current state of our buildings are. We got some students that are very old, um, that have aged, we've taken good care of them, but their lifespan is basically done. We have other buildings that, um, needed we should kind of take care of for them to last longer. And then we have some other buildings that we just generally, so I think they see all of that after looking at the condition, educational adequacy and our enrollment. I think they're online with, with what we just reported out.
I think one of the telltale signs for us too is when we started looking at the information, things put together, what was going on inside the buildings, not just the outside. The brick and mortar component of it, to see how each component was about, it being its lifespan, to see what happens. And I think in the next two to three years, our F C I starts to jump through, grew up exponentially, nothing happens to our buildings. And our current ability to maintain it or drop that down isn't there. So I think that really was the telltale sign for that as well. These two programs in conjunction, it, it really helped us see if this is. Better than, hey, we need something there, if something there is broken, oh, just go fix it. It's really more of that preventative maintenance, trying to keep ourselves in a good state of affairs with our buildings. And again, going back to, we recognize how we've done a good job at this point in time, but now we're seeing the older buildings coming. Our, our building of the late two thousand, the two, two thousands are now starting to add that F C I. You know, taking our buildings to a place where we have to start to do that.
Tracy, could you clarify, clarify that little F C I thing just a second? I remember looking at the initial report, right now we're at fifty percent, which is, which is really where we want to be. If I remember right, like if we were to do nothing, I think it was by twenty, twenty seven or twenty eight, that number jumped pretty high to.
To like thirty or thirty five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, it was almost like that. And that just kind of blew my mind, thinking that's five, six, seven years from now. You know, we, we go from a really good spot to now we, we're not a good spot. It's this really tight window.
Well, and I think this is why this plan has actually come almost at a, it's almost at a perfect time for you. Because you find yourself in a position where I think the community recognizes how you've kept your buildings maintained. But they're also seeing their age. I think again, Skyview High is a great example. Like, I don't think people think Skyview is an old.
Twenty five years old.
Exactly right. And you look at, but I know, but you know, but that's twenty five years old, that's basically over. It's about half its life, maybe a little, little less than half its life. But, you know, you have to invest in these things. And again, twenty five million on a hundred million dollar investment for another life is a pretty good investment, I think. And I, and I do think that, you know, one of the things about the committee, if I may go back to committee, I really think the committee, like, the people on the committee, first of all. So we have a, we have a general contractor on, who knows construction, we have a city representative, city planners on the same. So he's identifying like where, where this work, you know, where you need this. You know, we have curriculum people on there, we have just parents that just concern, you know, just invested parents. It's a group that gave us a lot of perspective. And so. Yeah. Yeah. And, and the last thing I might say about is equity. I think that a good facilities master plan gets away from what I might call a squeaky wheel effect. That somebody wants, just wants something. It really is a good way to, a good comprehensive plan really does look at the district as a whole system. And distributes dollars where they're necessary, but also equitable. And so when we talk about weight rooms, I mean, it's something that's simple as weight rooms, but every high school should have the same opportunity when it comes to weight rooms. I mean, that's, I mean, I know it's weight rooms, but they should have the same opportunities in science. And in language arts and special ed and theater. And so when you can create that equity in a plan and show the investments of the schools. And even when you're just putting, just putting general maintenance, schools know that they're going to be paid attention to. Equity is a big part of this. And I think actually when, from the board perspective, the board has the defensible data to then show the equity too. And so I think that's very beneficial for, for a school board to have, or board of trustees to have.
I'm not sure if Napa was in this position before, but I, I've always wondered that about the three high schools here. Like, yeah, one high school that has the theater and, you know, Columbia, and then you have the other high school. And is it because they, they thought they could just share the resources? But I think we've got to that point now where it does become more of an equity issue than, than shared. Because you don't have the high schools in already and West Ada and Boise doing that now, but you're going to have to write every school has.
Yeah, you're not, I mean, you're not, you're not big enough to run like specific theme based schools. Every school has to be comprehensive and they're big enough to be comprehensive. Fifteen hundred is a, you know, twelve to fifteen hundred is a good comprehensive high school. And I think you're right, I think that over time.
We've got more of that.
You, you've got over it.
So how, I, I know insurance, how is our insurance structured in this district when it comes to buildings? Because I know lower insurance rates are going to, are going to manifest themselves with newer schools. Is that going to make a, I don't, we haven't explored that explicitly yet, but that's one of those things when you have a newer building, you have some things to change. Insurance is one, your F C I is going to change because now you have a newer building, so it's not going to have some things to prepare. Uh, for a period of time that you need to put on that side of what we're talking about. So there's some residual savings that come into play with the buildings. There's the initial cost, for sure.
And, and these numbers that you ran through up here, how, what were those numbers based on? What, what square footage, cost per square foot, I mean, what year, what year were those?
And I'll have to, and they are projected out. We are, we're probably, I think we were twenty percent above today's cost in most things.
An indicator just like why he, um, their school was just built, um, they were at around the, you know, the construction.
For high school.
For high school.
Yeah, and they've been, let's say they opened this year, I think they did what? Yeah, so twenty.
Why do you, you're talking about?
The white guy's school in West.
So. So we have a good buffer than just in case.
I've asked a couple of architects, they're giving some roundabout numbers and it's somewhere around that three fifty square foot plus, three fifty to four fifty. Somewhere in those numbers, rough, nobody can earmark it right now because it, what today and what two weeks from today.
Well, who knew that in two months, the price of lumber was going to go to.
Right.
And then down, I mean, it just wants you that you can't, you can't pin it down that way.
So that's kind of a rough average. Their elementary's possible, a little bit more square foot just because they're small, high schools are a little bit less.
I got a question, uh, yes, so again, there's a little bit of offense board because I'm thinking. New facilities plan like this is going to require new responsibilities for a lot of people. Right now, currently, when there was something, uh, goes wrong or something, i- is it the principal in charge of? Of voicing that there's some, something needs to be done or is there somebody in charge of, of going to the schools and saying, okay, we need to do this?
So there's probably two roles that I would explain, one principals are probably getting more, two is things that break down. So something happens today, that's going to be a building level, they're going to issue that work. With the facilities plan that we have, we get more longitudinal information of, we can look at the age of systems. And start to identify those systems before they are breaking down and just be watching and look at that.
Who will be in charge of that?
That's the maintenance department. So underneath my.
Right now, I mean, typically, um, Kelly and Courtney would oversee the major things, electrical, plumbing, roofing and those infrastructure things. But it's, you know, water pipe doesn't work in a bathroom, it needs to have a work order for that, absolutely, the principals can see.
And there's a flexibility with all these timelines, right? For example, if something's still working really good and it says five years, we need to, yeah, start looking for changes and we don't have to change it. But it's the mind, the mindset that is, this is on paper, this means it's better happen.
Right, yeah, exactly. Yeah. This is a plan based on all the stuff, this is where we're currently at now. I think there's a lot of room actually to talk through about what needs and needs be, where that goes and what this goes and what this costs with that.
I think one of the things that's come up recently in everybody's mind is, um, school safety and security systems. And when these numbers were put together, because I know this has kind of been a multi year project, but especially with the volley and, and things that have happened. That's on everybody's mind, always has been, it just gets to the forefront of everyone's mind. So it, it makes sense, retrofitting schools, building new schools and, and taking those into account, have those numbers been added? Roto-freeding schools, building new schools, and taking those into account. Have those numbers been added to, to these numbers?
Yeah, there's. If you look at just the buildings itself, Nampa High and Centennial, those are our two biggest security systems. So just the structure. So some of that has been taken into consideration from the very beginning. The new updated system, those are the things when we get down into the details, we've got ourselves a little bit to have those discussions.
Some of that's architecturally designed.
Exactly. And then really communicating also with our PD department, the things they think are really critical for us, which we've already started to get to know.
Of course, I already said we had City Hall last week, and they have some ideas. So if, if things were to go as planned, you would sit down with an architect and the PD, and you'd just talk through.
Because I, you know, I look at Columbia and, and Skyview and all those hidden corners and places to, I mean, there's, I went to Lake Azul, it's a figure eight. It's about two round things on the end. So somebody trying to hide, you know, those little books of grand is on the outside of the building. Those are things that, from an architect's perspective, from the safety and security perspective. So full disclosure, I guess, I don't know if it's close to you, but I do sit on the planning and zoning commission here in City Nampa. And it is interesting to see the shift in demographics, especially moving from Boise to Meridian to Nampa, ten, probably been more than ten years, fifteen years. Where we had just tons of starter homes together, and that, that fueled the elementary, the school, the building. And now, they're grown up, moving out. But I see that shift again happening just because of the housing market was so horrible. Well, it's horrible all over the place, but they were moving. The demographics shifting from Boise to Nampa because it's cheaper here in Nampa, now even more so in Dalian. Look what's happening with values for this school. Because that shift just keeps going west. So I, I see, and this is just my opinion, I see a little bit of demographic, that same type of demographic shift again. We have younger families moving into Nampa because it's more affordable, and I put that in quotations, than other schools. And so, you know, there's always a balancing act, but looking at the capacity where our elementary schools are at right now. The discussion of shuttering some of those schools and, and can we, what's the cost of mothballing them versus, you know, I don't know.
Well, I, and I think there's where, you know, programmatically, again, the thing I love about Central. So if it doesn't become a pre-k center, it's always going to be a school. I mean, if you have to shift pre-k to be more distributed and pick a classroom here, classroom here. You still have a whole elementary school. I mean, that's a, that's a big deal, flexibility. Even West, you know, kind of thinking about how West can be used, not just alternative programs, but, you know, specialty programs or supporting career and technical education. Or anything to kind of alleviate where you can have that, and whether they're permanent or become, or are just temporary, there's your good options for you. Um, I think this does that. I, I agree with you, because you, you just don't know. And again, we're not having more kids born, but we're certainly having more kids move. That's for sure.
One of the things that, well, we can talk about private as well is that we're, we're looking at Snake River first, this position being one of those raised. We're not so sure that that's.
Yeah, what was that conversation just on last week?
We, we were looking at the, because we were looking at what it would take to do that part of board, especially. Never came back so high that it was much higher than what we anticipated across the board. It would be more feasible for us to take Snake River and make that a program school, which would give us a little bit of extra space as well. And use that more so for the programs to invest in such large amount of money maybe for the current location. And maybe that's when it comes on the plate as a way, since we're looking at the current area buildings, my old stories, nineteen fifty-two, nineteen fifty-two, and we've got some structural issues with it. So we're, we're looking at that as new information that comes, as we did talk. So it's, that could be another option. So it's kind of, again, where we have, we have a plan, having that plan now gives us the ability to have these conversations and have data and information with them. That's, that's our key here, is we have, we have information, we have planning, as was last. Well, here's, here's a good one.
Well, just the, the whole charter schools have, have added to this, and so the, the focus on what type of education is really a, a big thing in this community is like. That's why charter schools do become, because I want my kids to have this. And so I'm looking at, you know, thinking about career and technical center. I know we partner with different businesses in the community to provide the education in those current technical centers, but is there any possibility of partnering with, uh, through some construction or something? I'm going to throw that name out.
Oh, let's go with that one.
Yeah, I'm going to throw him out. I just out of the glance.
Yeah, you did.
But I mean, these big construction companies who might want to put their name on, on the building and, and partner with us to maybe provide not only the education piece of it, but the physical.
Where, where we find, find real opportunity around the country is equipment.
Yeah.
Like, like FFNE for typical schools, fifteen to twenty percent, curtech did to thirty, thirty-five, forty percent sometimes. Just depends on the type of equipment you're using. So even just equipment offset costs that companies can come in and help you with that is a big deal. I mean, it is a big deal because they want to train skilled workers, just like the next, you know, that's their training rep. And if they can do it in this investment, I, I agree. I think there's ample opportunity for entrepreneurship there.
The district office, have there, has there been any, and I'm sorry, I might be diving into some deep into it. Let me know if we did talk about this later, but this is a work session, I guess. So the district office, has there been consideration and thought into, into leasing a building in town? And would that be more cost of than, so just sell this, I guess, tow, tow it off the lot, I guess.
About four years ago, there was a building in town that we were really interested in. I think we had walked it, we started talking a little bit of numbers, possibly leasing that for a while. And then another entity came and kind of leased that before we could. So that, we've been close to that. We have talked through that. I think that is an option, although commercial right now is tough to find.
Yeah.
I think they had noticed in about a year out.
Wasn't the whole federal bank building, was it?
Want to hear on what?
Yeah, the one the city moved in, was that the one you were looking at?
Yeah.
Looking at maybe, because maybe.
Well, the one thing you gotta remember too is anytime we do a rental like that, we're, we're looking more like operational. So if we do a bond or anything like that, we're looking for property tax, which takes it off our operation. When you look at the building size that we need, you're looking at possibly nine hundred thousand to a million dollars a year. And that's not, that's not something that's easily taken out of our budget and put.
One of the other things that there could be a possibility would be a, a build, someone build and we rent that on it, I think. There's that possibility.
Maybe a public private partnership.
There's a lot of examples for administration, especially administration in the country, because again, nobody wants to put it on a bond because it doesn't work. It does, so. But leasing to buy, there's.
So what is, what is the timeline on the decision making?
Yeah, so I, I, well, I, I have one in, in my head, but it doesn't mean anything because we'd have to decide as general. But we do have bonds that are starting to expire, and we'll talk about that. I think when we have our financial plan, and that, that would open up some of the possibilities for us to be able to access funds without really raising taxes or not raising taxes very much. And that's coming out the next year or so. But I, I think what we would do is we'd have this, have our financial planner come in August and talk through it. And then I think the board would have all the information on as far as where we are with construction of the buildings and the current conditions, and then the financial ability for the board. And then I think you guys know the timelines about, do we want a bond? When do we want a bond? How much do we want a bond for? And that would kind of give us the timeline of when we kind of go. If, if it was, it's a choose.
What is the, Randy, I'm sure you've mentioned this. There's nothing in the millennial fund that would help with any of this, any of these costs. I mean, that, that's. For schools, not the millennial fund that. Yeah, lottery things.
Lottery funds are strictly for students, occupant buildings only. We only get about one point two, we use about five hundred thousand dollars a year in general maintenance around. So it's truly not something we produce for that.
One other piece of information too, just, we're not alone in this. Many school boards are exactly where we are. I just read today, Idaho Falls is looking to do a two hundred and fifty million dollar bond. I know West Ada is very close to doing another one as well. We see this deal a couple of years ago, a hundred and seventy-one. So there, Monteville's looking, I mean, there's many school districts in this spots. We're not unique in this.
It's just the, the worst time in the economy to have this discussion. But it's also the best time, really. I mean, that's the thing, is that you gotta, you've gotta, not sell it, you gotta educate. On, on the ROI's and all that kind of stuff. It's just, you know, we need a good sales person. And I think that's where the board could come in and, you know, talk about hiring consultants and what that might look like, and have them run the show.
They can only do that for educating that advocate.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So that's, that's exactly right. So, and, and again, you have some like really good.
But they just need to hire consultants.
Yeah. Facilities community that we have, now they have a building to do different things. They can educate, um, under all these advocate.
And that's part of the strategy.
We got a great facility.
It is a really, just speaking from being on that committee for the last, well, I think the last two years, it's been on the committee. It is a group that's grown. There's a lot of invested community members. It's really interesting to see how invested they were and how much they watched the table. We didn't have to do it at times.
Yeah.
They were really invested.
Yeah, I really do think that the, that this is the time to do it. And the community does care about, you know, facilities. They really do. I mean, how many emails have we gotten about parking situation? Every time they have a game. So, yeah, I don't think it's going to be, I don't think it's going to be, I hate to use the word sell, because we're not trying to sell anything, but I think it's not going to be a hard sell.
Yeah, well, data, data is important, and that's why I like this specific way we're doing this. Because that really sells, you know. But we, we just got to decide, I guess. I know we're, we're looking at, you know, we're just looking at, we're, we're still on the outside trying to figure out, okay, are we going to play the game? I appreciate all this information.
And I'm, you may have told, when we talked about this really early on in the year, you may have mentioned about West Middle School, but I gotta be honest with you, this was the first time I, I, it clicked in my head that there was talk about closing West Middle School. So are they gonna, are the other two junior highs, are they really going to absorb that?
Yeah, so. Early on, we, we knew West was kind of an older building, and West's population slowly gotten smaller, and I think this year was kind of a mark, it dropped quite a bit. And then looking at enrollment projection, it was even smaller. And so looking at it now, if you were to move students to the other three middle schools, it would put them pretty close to their capacity. So it, it's right on that cusp of keeping it or not, or then that question, keep is you, you reutilize that for a different purpose. So it's a tough, tough thing right now. I think this fall, like, give us more information to see if our enrollment projection's accurate or if it's even off or.
Or higher. And I think that at its best, it's really the opportunity to have, we have a good crime. And then also, I think our secondary mission is really to stop this. One of the major pieces that we really miss is that true alternative high school. In, in facilities, we have. So I think there's some numbers that could be offset with that as well.
So both you're talking union and, and alternate, alternate West.
The other thing that came out of this too, as Tracy alluded to, is the feeder pattern.
Correct.
If we have three high schools, it'd be nice to have three middle schools feed into those. And right now, we kind of have four feeding into three, and some are split in some schools. So it's not that way, that reassessment of our feeder patterns would be a really important one. So when we found out some more of that information, and that's why it's.
So where Union is at now, that old side of the building, is that a more expensive building to maintain than West right now?
Yes.
Is that more than, is it more expensive to maintain?
So you're looking at size, so you're looking at size too, right? It's a smaller school. So West has much larger footprint, so it's got some more into it. The, the middle school, it was elementary school, obviously, it's, it's origins start there. But it's also one of our most unsafe schools. We go back to that safety issue, those open campuses inside, once you're in the doors, you're, you're everyone.
It's all open, yeah. It's an open concept.
And, and again, so we looked at a lot of those type of things, like if we're moving Union, we need an alternative higher school. West would be too big for one independent.
Right.
So we are having the opportunity to utilize West in that capacity. And that came as more of an idea through this process. It wasn't the start of the process. It was just ideas that came through that. That made sense. Without having to look for another building, increase the cost of remodeling, not necessarily remodeling the building, another building. We can utilize what we have. We do have a really good footprint as far as land and also buildings we have and not to work with.
Is there condition analysis, Tracy? I thought, I thought it saw like the most expensive needed buildings were lower.
It does. And, and don't forget, keeping on West still is like, it's a gymnasium, it's a field, it's a, like, those are community uses that you never want to get rid of. Like, your gym will be used all the time here. And so you get a benefit of having an alternative program, it's still having a real community resource for those. You know, league and club programs that always use your buildings. And so West, and you don't want to take that out of the West. So I think that's a good benefit of that.
I never thought about going, but in, in Sunny Ridge, oh, it is, it's all open in there. Some, some guy in it, some, walks in and got free, right?
So a lot of those things we're taking into considerations. We were looking through all of those choices. The data's starting to drive us, starting to drive that committee to certain ways. We have robust conversations, and there's still robust conversations to be had. These are, these are ideas generated from that committee. It's not necessarily landing on, there could be some other decisions that trigger other decisions. That's the part where we're starting to true. We want input, we got this far, and now we need it's more. How do we want to attack?
Is there anybody here that needs to say something? I think I got on my question. Oh, I know.
Sure, guys, it's me.
It's not, well, work section typically don't have. I was just wondering if there's some, somebody from the community here or somebody that. Has that committee changed much over the last five years?
At the time, there's been a solid lot. We expanded a little bit. Peter did. So, I mean, it started with me, went to Peter, now it's working.
So there's some change. I had been on the committee from. Yeah, yeah, very, I've been on the committee, kind of, from very.
Yeah.
And I think I'm the board member on that committee, right?
You asked to be on that.
You asked. Originally, um, Mr. Ross, Mr. Trustee Ross, yeah.
Okay, so right now, there, when was the last time you moved there?
Uh, in the May.
There's a recommendation to make.
No, I'm actually beginning to choose.
Yeah.
You just got asked.
So was there a trustee on that, on the board member on there? I know it's quite a while. It was longer for two.
Right, it was the main ninth meeting, I believe, or before that, that you said that you weren't.
And that could have got lost in transition because I had to come on till after.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think, I'll get you on the next one.
You can tell me that.
And one, one thing I would suggest, and just to reiterate within the board's thinking, the, the window, the, you know, personally, I talked about time and those things. As a community member living here, just building a house on those things. The idea of being able to afford these things for our district and not pay a more amount of tax, try to go through a year where my tax bill plummets. And oh, great, but then, then to ask for that again, I would highly, highly suggest that more consider that window is really important.
Oh, absolutely.
Because, and just to reiterate that, I think it's really important for our community here. We, we already have that burden in our community. And we're not asking to increase that burden, we're asking to keep that burden as it is, where if it is a, a small increase, it's not the A. That volatility creates even more challenges. I would just, again, push that thing back as well.
When, how much is the bond? How much was this current bond for, remember?
There were numerous bonds.
Numerous bonds are expired. A hundred and fifty million is essentially what we put.
Total.
I believe, and Eric will build it.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're pretty close to a hundred and fifty when we would have.
Yeah, and you're, you're absolutely right though. But there is always going to be the question, whether it's understood or not, is why do we need to keep having buddies if we're having a bond?
And I think this helps describe it.
Yeah.
Because you look at those capital expenses versus just the maintenance expenses, it's a two of your pockets. I think it helps us have a conversation.
I really appreciated the presentation, the detail.
He's the expert, so any other questions we wanna ask, as soon as we can.
And, and, and I'm not going away, cause you'll have a thousand more questions, I'm sure. But that's part of this, I mean, I think that, you know, you, you, whatever it takes to bridge over to when your ask is, and whatever your ask is, is what we're gonna be here to help with.
So in the future, Tracy, we can zoom you into a board meeting.
Absolutely.
We'll have questions.
Absolutely, and I think, yes. And of course, you, you're, you're maintaining and retaining your, your partnership with MRS Go, who holds a commission data too. And, I mean, I think that's important, at least. And I think that's the thing that a lot of people, you have tools now, like you have a, a capital assessment tool that I'm gonna guess five districts in the state I don't have, nobody has. I mean, sure, when I walked into Boise two thousand and six, they had twelve Excel sheets on roofs and HVAC and all this. And it took them a while to get to where they needed to get to, but to have the sophistication of those systems now, and as you get into a capital program, you'll be invest, you'll be invested into capital programs that will help you keep in front of capital needs along with work orders that in five years or ten years when you're done with this, you're not spending the amount of money to assess your building you did now because it's in continuous assessment. So you're not spending whatever money you spent to do an assessment five years after they're all done. You're continuously doing it. And so the, the dollars you're having, it's frankly a bad business model for a planner, but, um, but it's what you need to be doing. I don't want you to have to spend two hundred thousand dollars on a planner in year five because you're reinventing it. It is frustrating and that is, I mean, I will tell you that I've been trying to convince district of this for fifteen years. And the idea that they'll get into a plan, they'll, even the new schools they build, they'll leave on, out of the software, out of the capital program until the next assessment or plan comes in. And it takes time to do all that, instead of just doing it as a contractor's doing it, you're gonna be miles ahead. I mean, because again, you've got whatever your bond is now, in fifteen or twenty years, guess what? You're gonna probably look at funding for other stuff, cause the school districts are like that, cities are like that. And you're a public entity that does that. And to the point, you wanna maintain a consistent tax rate. And I think that as long as you don't burden as much, I mean, that, that's, that's a balance you guys are always gonna have. Is that what's the burden versus what's the investment? Because at the end of the day, it's about the pocketbook and the checkbook and the retirements of people. And, um, and being good, and, and being good stewards of that for your community. And for me, again, to do this type of plan is gonna save you millions looking forward, not thousands, it's gonna save you millions looking forward. And I can't, I can't capitalize that right now, but I will tell you, even just if you look at like, good, good auditing of contracts will save you two percent. Put two percent on a hundred million, put two percent on a hundred and fifty million. Okay, that's, you know, if you don't wanna save that, put it in my bank account, cause I'll take it. Seriously, that's a lot of money to be saved, but it's being able to have these systems in place that allows you to do it. Instead of, there's a subdivision going up in this, you're in such a good, you're in such a good place with this right now, and you're gonna get better.
So I know the district's had conversations with the city, but have those conversations included all, not all, but the wanted questions when it comes to the site, Nampa question?
Yeah, we just had a conversation last week, that's when we went and talked with the mayor and, you know, uh, some of her staff about saying, we're kind of at this stage now where we're gonna start kind of publicly presenting some information, letting the city know and, uh, very supportive. And, um, encouraged us to really think about, because there's many things that the board could give, the board could look at selling land to generate more revenue. They could look at leasing land, you know, those kind of things. But the thought from the city was keep what we have, cause it's hard to find land, um, and then look at maybe using that well, so that.
Using it for, for the school district.
Like, do we get, need to have like a athletic complex, and what Boise has, like Donna Larson Park, is that where we have all of our sport facilities? So instead of building a bunch of these nice things around, you can have one central area, have practice fields, and allow the teams to come to the central area to play. Maybe that's a possibility with the, maybe they have a higher footprint to come, uh, if you build enough higher, new locations. So just, you know, they were talking through us with those things, we just explored it. But we, we did want the city to know, because what we didn't wanna do is that the board does go a bond, we don't want the city and the district bonding.
Yes.
Uh, we're meeting each other and we're not doing anything with that. So we just wanted to kind of get out and say, you know, we're looking at that, when are you looking at that? Have those conversations so we're on the same.
Cause Nampa, you know, recently, again, I think it was fourth, fifth, or sixth year in a row, voted best run city in America. And, and that goes along with, I mean, the school district has to mirror that also. I mean, the school, they have to work hand in hand, the city, the city takes pride in its school district, vice versa. And so I think it's really, it's critical to have those wanted conversations with the city.
They seem, they were very supportive of the direction. Uh, I think the police department was equally so far.
The police, the police.
They want Nampa gone, they want the high.
Maybe they can raise it for us.
They probably would have left, they might use their tactic to.
And obviously the, the recent events around the Petri play in the line as well. You see some of our schools that, even though we've done our best to keep them safe and not where they were like the same, this is back in the schools. So, yeah, they, they were very happy.
So the, the site that's been talked about for a possible new Nampa high school? Choosing that one's good. Is that a district that we owe that property? I know I've asked.
These are the properties on. We, yeah, it, it was, uh, we currently have, um, three different sites, not that would fit a high school.
Right.
We have two that would be middle school, elementary, and we have one high school. That would work size.
So, but I'm gonna ask questions that you don't know the answer to, but at what point, at what point, um, and I think Marco alluded to this, do we start making the yes or no's as a board? I mean, cause.
I, I have years to really talk a lot, probably in September. Even maybe have a work session after August.
I think that's the key, you wanna get all the pieces and then start having the conversations, that financial piece.
This is the facilities.
Facilities. Let's start seeing what happens after that.
And if I were to give a recommendation, I'd probably try to bond some time in the script. That would be.
And that aligns with the city, they don't have nothing going on.
So Marco and Chairman, that would mean that the board would have to take action in July, January to decide at the very latest. And I don't know the exact date, I'm just off my head, but January to decide if they're going to run a resolution for a bond election in the March election.
So, and thinking of just getting it out to the community and having that conversation with the community, open houses. I like what the city does with their open houses and input, things like that. Sometimes people show up, like.
Well, we've, we've experienced that already in this service. When Marco came to one of our open houses that we had, and it wasn't hugely populated, it was very informative. And we had some people that had discussions that we need to have.
So the administration's been, they've been pretty cautious so far. I think you don't wanna get the cart too far into, whatever. So I think if the board would give us, yes, explore, I think we'd put together a pretty good plan about information, cause we can only do information. We probably would have a parent group that would be more than information, that would probably come alongside and do some advocacy there. But we, we could skip it on a pretty good plan, we just haven't done any of that and haven't wanted to get too far ahead.
So do you need a decision from the board in order to take that step?
I feel like I, I think. Yeah.
So I have written down.
Written down?
Written down. After the presentation, doing a work session late August, early September, and then the board takes action after the work session.
So, I don't think this is, it's months really. Is that a, I guess I'm just.
It's not a bad time.
You're fine, I think it's.
Okay. Yeah. I tend to, I tend to be a little bit, a lot more conservative on terms to numbers.
He would be the guy I think I would, I would ask a lot, I, I, you know, the thing, you don't wanna drag it out.
Sure.
I mean, you wanna get good information, good enough time.
Yeah, there's a sweet spot, there is a sweet spot.
And, and it's not, and it, it really is about, what, what's fascinating about this kind of process and engage in the community after the plan gets completed is that if it's too long, people for some reason think it's bigger. You know what I mean? They get in their head, well, this is, like, they've been talking about this for like six months now, that must, the number of messages keep getting bit. And it's not that, and it's a weird mindset in areas. So it's, it's tight enough where the information is concise, it's out there. Your advocates have time to get out there for you. And again, you're right, you can go out and you can tell people about this. And there is a fine line, we do a lot of bond planning too on top of facilities and, and work with PACs, you know, you get those groups together. And I think, I think Boise has a fantastic model, um, they've done this really well for the last three times. So I think, and so you don't have to invent this thing either. So I think that, and you've got community advocates already out there that are willing to help. But I think that I wouldn't worry about that timeline because I think that timeline fits almost perfect, what you're talking.
I'm looking forward to moving forward and looking at more details.
Well, the next piece of information we're gonna send you, and, and Bernie and I were just talking about this, is we're gonna send you, um, based on this timeline, what the FCI looks like in the next thirty years. I think that'll be a good tool for you.
Marco, we're happy to sit down and watch through any of the reports that came to this. I mean, you wanna see those through, like, all the educational adequacy of buildings, of issues of the buildings and swap through those. And all of that input and everything. It, it might be helpful to kind of just see them, cause those were all compiled to come to this.
There is monumental amounts of, yeah. A lot, there is a ton, which is, it's good, because you can start to see those trends. Yeah, we're more than happy to share this.
Or you can walk down the, the hallway at Skyview and there's like. And that's the, there's nothing there for me.
Sorry, practice a lot.
You can take a bullet between your reins sometimes.
Was there any, any split, or was he gonna say?
No.
Case of question.
We got some folks here from our district too, I just wanted to know that this is a plan, they got some emails today, like, what's going on?
By school, by, by September. So are you, are you the one that emailed? Yeah.
Yeah.
So it did come from a background. Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Well, anything else trusted out yet? Anything else?
Just thinking, you guys are taking your time, I know it's a lot of meetings, but this is really important.
This is huge. It affects every asset of this community, not just the school district. It really does. I just, you know, when I look at other schools and not just the United School. Anything else that?
No, I, yeah, like I said, I keep saying, I, I think you're in a really great spot. I think you have the right people in the right place, I do. I just, this has been a great group to work with. And again, I do this in a lot of places, I don't say that because I'm staying here, I do this because I believe this group, you have the right place at the right time. I'm just, I'm just super excited, I mean, I love working in Idaho. You obviously know I'm not where I'm from, not from here, but I love working here because of, of the people that I work with out here. And you don't find that, and so it's a genuine honor to work in this group.
Yeah, so if there's nothing else, then I will, we'll adjourn at seven thirty-two.